Good morning, everyone, and I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position, and also please be advised. Our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. The meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is in the building, not here at the moment. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That is great. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the ability to come and do the city's work here at City Hall. Father, we ask you to pray over our deliberations. God, give us wisdom, give us courage, and just give us insight, Father, that would bring glory to you. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on December the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts of the week for December the 4th through the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Do we have any proclamation? Unfinished business. Our first unfinished business is amending the fiscal year 2021 budget to reflect receipt of Department of Homeland Security reimbursement grant in the amount of $150,961.40. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property for grass cutting for $429 on property at 110 Oakley Drive in District 2, and Billy Wise is the last known owner. And this resolution was table one year on December the 3rd, 2019, to allow the owner to make payments. One payment of $50 was made, making the balance $379. We need a motion to substitute a resolution assessing a lien in the amount of $379.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
Our next, we need, we need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the substituted resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is assessing a nuisance abatement lien against property for grass cutting for $254 on property at 501 Henderson Street in District 6. This is Jerry Michael Work is the last known owner. This resolution was table for one year on December the 3rd, 2019, to allow the owner to make payments. However, no payments was received. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item assessing nuisance abatement lien against property for grass cutting is for $254, and this is on property at 2815 Tallahassee Street in District 6. Glenda C. Perry and Erica Wilson are the last known owners. And this resolution was table for one year on December the 3rd, 2019, in order to allow the owners to make payments. One payment of $100 was received, making the balance $154. We need a motion to substitute a resolution assessing a lien in the amount of $154.
I'll make that motion, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
I need a, a motion to adopt.
Motion, I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the substituted resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is assessing nuisance abatement lien against property for grass cutting for $251, and this is on property at 3 North 28th Street in District 6. This is Jessie Marie Baron is the last known owner. And this resolution was table for one year on December the 3rd, 2019, to allow the owner to make payments. However, no payments were received. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No council action is necessary regarding 61 West Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7 because the grass cutting cost has been paid by the owner. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1405 Kentucky Avenue in District 1. Ronnie E. Ronnie Pollock, subject to a motion in favor of Community Home Bank Inc. being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in November of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1411 Eastview Avenue in District 1. Kelvin A. Bothwell, Mary Bothwell being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned structure. We filed it in March of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The pleasure of the council, I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1015 Fairview Avenue in District 6. And this is the First Equity Home LLC and the estate of Vester Martin and Vester Lee Martin Sr. estate, and Carol Vester Martin Jr. being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Did I skip one?
Yeah, you skipped this one. This is there in order.
920.
Oh, District 3, okay.
It's got the bill.
Okay, we'll go back up to.
Number 11.
Okay, property located at 920 Avenue F in District 3, State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone speaking opposition to this? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Can I speak in favor of it also?
Yes, go ahead.
This is, at 920 Avenue F, I've never received so many complaints from any other property in my district than this one. And the people or the neighbors and everybody that called to complain, I had to explain to them it's a process. We cannot just go on private property and do anything until the process runs its course. And the Building Department, Brian Harbison, he did his job. Now that time has ran its course, it's before us. This is part of the process. So now we will do what we need to do today. So this is, it's an ongoing situation, and it's just, it's awful. And this one, we need to put up, have a screen where everybody could see what we're talking about. That's all, Madam President. Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, and we will continue with item 12. The public hearing is abating nuisance at 1015 Fairview Avenue in District 6. Vester, the estate of Vester Martin and Vester Lee Martin Sr. and Carol Vester Lee Martin Jr. being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there one speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in January of this year. There was a building permit taken out in May. There have been no improvements, no action on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
A final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance of a commercial building that's located at 1017 Nakalula Road in District 7, and this is Dawn Cossey being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in November of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a resolution authorizing agreement with BASK LLC, and this is for the city to sponsor the 2021 BASK Elite Series fishing tournament that will be held at Gadsden Couso Landing on May 6th through the 9th, 2021, and the amount is 25,000, which will be split between the city and the Greater Gadsden area tourism. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Department reports. We have some citizen requests, and before, before you come, not talking to the people that are coming, but just to the general public, there's been some discussion about the time limit that we give everybody to discuss. When I first came on here, that was a big discussion. I did some, and it's not because we have a First Amendment right to speak. At your public meetings, you don't necessarily have a right to speak. But that is a courtesy, a part of our agenda, and a part of our rules is where we allow public comment, we allow citizen requests, and so we set the time limit to five minutes. So this is not something that we just made up. But since I've been here in this seat, everybody that has come up here, I have not, some people have gone 10 minutes, some people have gone. I have not stopped people, but when there's a lot of people to speak, I think that five minutes should be the limit. So this is the reason why we have the five minute. It's not, it's not, it's a privilege for you to speak at council meeting, not necessarily a right. So at this time, we have four speakers this, we have three speakers this morning. Mr. Trent Thrasher, Airport.
Thank you, Madam Toles, for seeing me today. My name is Trent Thrasher. My address is 3053 Steel Station Road. I don't know, can y'all see this right here? My office is located at 3053 Steel Station Road, which is right here, that lines up with runway 36. We use, as far as me as an owner, we use this airport quite a bit, in and out, for our customers. But today I come to to speak to what, what I see as a potential problem with this rendering plant. First off, I reached out to the Air National Guards. The Air National Guards, I spoke to Captain Jeff Malone with the, a jump master with the 20th Special Force Group that utilizes this airport. And I asked him what the issues that they would have with this new rendering plant. And as he looks, and you can look right here, there has a lagoon right here, that this lagoon is around five to seven foot deep, which would cause a jump hazard, a water hazard for these guys when they jump. So they would have to put a rescue boat in this lagoon with a medic. So as looking at this as their jump zones, they have gone from three jump zones to two jump, jump zones over the last few years. So this would go away. The hazards of the 130-foot tower that's there, night jumps would go away. So we would lose our, our National Guards. And I don't even know if y'all know what kind of revenue this, this brings in, but the motels, every day that they come here are $3,000 a day. They spend $700 a day in eating, not counting the soldiers by eating food daily, getting fuel. This don't even count for the helicopters, the fuel that they're buying at our airport that our airport desperately needs. You know, so at the end of the day, I know we're all patriotic, we just got up and, and saluted our flag. At the end of the day, I always get the warm, fuzzy feeling when these guys are out there jumping for our country and that we know that they have our back. We can be on both sides of the fence today, but we always come together when it's our country. And that's what we need to do today. We still need to have the presence of our National Guards in our city, our county. I'd like to go on and add that as, as a builder contractor, I started, you can probably see right here, in 1998, I built the Lancaster's first hangar there. It was a corporate plane. In 2019, I built another hangar. So I have built seven hangars over the last 23 years there. This is, we are not growing at a fast pace at our airport. We need to utilize this. You know, we have airport full that's growing, that's moving roads to get hangars in. You know, we need to look toward using this property for aviation use. You know, we only get one chance. If we want to be a big city, we need to use, utilize our, our land. So what I'm saying is today that we need to come together as a community and come up with Plan B. It's okay, Plan A didn't work, but Plan B, we can come together and work as every city and come together and use our airport for, for its needs. That's all I have.
We have Kim Kidd.
First, I want to.
Excuse me, excuse me. Captain Keener, if you will ask them to be quiet outside. If this continues, then I will ask you to get the police and have them removed.
I'm gonna take a deep breath. This is not my comfort zone, and I want to say after, you know, thank you for allowing me, allowing me to have one voice that I feel at this time does speak clearly for many. I'm just one person with one voice that's listening to others. So I'm gonna start with, because I have to have it here, I want to stay on task within my minutes. But my name is Kim Kidd, and I'm the owner of The Willa Tree, which I've been in business for 28 years. We are located on 2109 Rainbow Drive, and our distribution center is located on Steel Station Road. And I want to add that I've worked extremely hard, and nothing has been given to me but opportunity that I seeked. I'm here today voicing my opinion and facts of how this will devastate the growth of my business and 42 employees and their families. Yes, devastate. The smell from this plant will ruin the product that I ship out to our other locations and customers. I would have to move, and I can't afford to do that. I've had to put a stop to our expansion of our warehouse for 2021 because of this rendering plant. We would also lose more employment opportunities that we could extend in 2021 due to this rendering plant and not being able to extend our, expand our business. As part of the, as part of the leadership, you each do have the authority to do what is best for the people and the city of Gadsden and Edgewall County. When you know the public is in this big of an outcry, you should not want to lean on a flawed process. You have known about this for three weeks. Three weeks is a long time. The information is there. The council has said it would support the people, but clearly, I, my personal opinion, it's not being done. Whew, the process, and you know, I asked that question, why? There's no, no process is needed when you can stop this now. You are letting a very small selection of people and a flawed process determine the outcome for all of Edgewall County, a select few. Minutes from an IDA meeting from 2016 show that a rendering plant labeled Chicken was rejected because then they knew it was not good for our community and not who we wanted to be. Only when the leadership has changed and did the rendering plant come back into play. It was not right in 2016, and it is not now or ever. I asked that question, why now? And why, just a select few, are we letting that make the decision and outcome for all? I mean, why didn't it go before the IDA board, before it's even come out to all of us? Why? We do deserve to be heard, even though the request there to call the police, that's not in my thing, I'm just ad libbing. We do deserve to be heard, not dismissed as we were last week. This city's leadership, or lack of it, is making a bad business decision above human life. And it's a decision. No process is needed when we can stop this now. Where is the accountability of all your individual choice of words and actions you showed the people of Gadsden last Tuesday? I sat here. Nobody could have ever prepared me for such an absolute abuse of power and leadership because I believe in the power of one, and we do make a difference, and we, with that connection collectively, come together. You each work for the people of Gadsden and should respectfully listen, listen, not close out, turn the blinds down. Respectfully listen and care about our concerns. We're scared. Can you not see it? Can you not hear it? We're asking for help. We want to be heard. We want to work together peacefully, respectfully, but we're getting walls built up, doors slammed, windows closed. I feel like I'm the one that's being threatened. Our rights are taken away when we can't have a voice either. Instead, what I got from that was we heard accusations of death threats, which, again, that I know of, no police reports were filed on, Trumpish behavior, because we were exercising our rights to be heard. And when you heard them, you said, keep up, and hey, I'll just say vote no. I'm packing if you want to come after me. Questioning religion, don't text me anymore, I'm busy. I promise, I promise, if I would have known about the chicken plant in that neighborhood, I would have spoke up then. But the truth is, I didn't know about it. But what I do feel, the comment, where were the people when it got on that side of the town, actually was likely the same process that we're all relying on now that put that chicken plant in that location. A previous council, mayor, IDA recruited the business, and because of the process, there was no community opposition, because by the time they were aware of that, it was already built, too late to stop. I know about this rendering plant now, today. Please do not make a choice to put this plant in another neighborhood now. This is worse than the chicken plant you were referring to. I heard you all loud and clear. This is serious and should be taken seriously. Have you looked back at the video, really, of last week? Is that behavior you or the council or any of you are proud of in the direction of the leadership? Well, I'm scared to death, and I can tell you, I want to be a part of the positive process and not a personal one. That was personal. And I want to end in, you know, in my opinion, I feel like the city's existing leadership is truly stealing away the future of the city based in opinions by a select few. Let the people vote if you really want the people to have an input. No process needed for that, just stop it now. Be a part of the solution of what is best for the city of Gadsden. If you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. I pray that you each stand up and be the solution by stopping this rancid rendering plant. Putting any business before human life never ends well, especially this rendering plant. And thank you for letting me go over.
I said I was going to call the police. Peaceful means that our meeting was almost disturbed last week. That's what we're supposed to hear?
Yes, ma'am.
No, not, not during our meeting.
I have packets for each of the council members and the mayor and the city attorney, if he's here.
Pass these to. Give those to the clerk.
I'm Sheila Freeman, and I'm president of Edgewall Cherokee Association of Realtors, and I'm speaking on behalf of the association and all of its members. The Edgewall Cherokee Association of Realtors comprises 287 members, including Realtor members and affiliated businesses. Our office is located in Gadsden on South Fifth Street. Upon learning of the proposed sale of land and the consideration for the rendering plant by the Gadsden Airport Authority and the city of Gadsden, the association sought to determine the effective property values and quality of life for all of Edgewall. A survey of our members has revealed that 95% perceive the plan as harmful to the local real estate market. Area real estate agents have noted immediate adverse effects of the proposed plant. Transactions to purchase homes have been placed on hold, and decisions for home purchases have been delayed. Agents report clients who made recent purchases have expressed regret and fear for future property values. An estimated 30% or more of local real estate transactions in 2020 involved a buyer who was moving into our area from out of state. This is an upward trend. The Gadsden area is a choice because of our beautiful river and the amenities that our city has to offer. Today, many buyers are not tied to a particular location. This may be due to a job that requires regional travel, allows remote work, or even retirement. Our area's natural beauty and the rivers and lakes are priceless assets that influence property values. People want to live in areas that include outdoor activities such as parks, hiking, boating, and more. The livability of Gadsden and the surrounding communities would be greatly affected due to environmental hazards, health complications, and quality of life issues. We must guard our natural resources to protect property values. The environmental impact of a rendering plant is a genuine concern for every person in Edgewall County. The loss of real property value due to external factors is called economic or locational obsolescence. One example is an industry that adversely impacts an area. Economic obsolescence is incurable, meaning that it's beyond the control of the property owners. A. Appraisers and real estate brokers are required to include factors of economic and locational obsolescence and conditions that negatively impact a particular property on their reports. So what are the results of economic obsolescence? Decreasing property values on appraisals adversely affect loans for both the purchase of homes and refinancing. A decline in construction of new homes, which in turn negatively impacts contractors, as well as the sale of building supplies and services. Increasing days on market for properties as people make choices not to live near such a site. This creates an additional reduction of property values. Simply because a project is proposed or recommended does not necessarily make it a good fit for Edgewall County or the right jobs for our people. It is a decision to be made locally with careful consideration to doing the right thing for all of our neighbors, our communities, and our children. Why is Gadsden and Edgewall County not the right choice for this project? Edgewall County is the smallest county in land area ranked 67 out of 67 counties in Alabama. It is one of the most densely populated, ranked 12 out of 67 counties in population. Most rendering plants are located in rural agricultural communities with low population density. Ward, South Carolina has 91 persons as population. Broadway, Virginia, 3880 persons population. Timberville, Virginia, 2,645 persons. The rendering plant in Hansville, Alabama, Hansville has a population of 3,391, but it is located 8.6 miles outside the city limits in a rural agricultural setting with no other adjoining towns nearby. In comparison, at a two-mile radius from our proposed site, more than 2,500 properties and three schools are impacted. At a radius of four miles from the plant, over 10,000 properties and four schools are affected. And this comes from the Edgewall County tax records. Studies of areas with animal operations indicate loss of property value anywhere from 10% to 60% and even as high as 80%, depending on proximity to the plant. Edgewall Cherokee members sell real estate in surrounding counties in northeast Alabama. As the largest city, Gadsden is the hub or center of commerce for our entire county. Our clients and customers who live in Edgewall County and the adjoining towns and counties rely on Gadsden for shopping, restaurants, medical care, and other services. Many live outside of the Gadsden city limits but work in Gadsden, or they own businesses in Gadsden. Gadsden benefits directly from the support of all of the people in these communities. The city of Gadsden's economy is closely intertwined with Edgewall County and especially its adjoining towns, so much so that a city data map of Gadsden, Alabama includes the zip codes for Itala, Rainbow City, Glencoe, Hoeksbuff as the greater Gadsden area. You can see the attached map in the back of your packet. Because of the close connection of the local economies, property values are also intricately connected. To protect property values, we must balance local needs and concerns with the needs and concerns of neighboring communities and the entire region. We must ensure decisions serve the public interest and that the city of Gadsden is a good neighbor. We are all in this together. What affects one of us affects all of us, and we are, in fact, better together and stronger together. Thank you, Madam President.
Remarks by the council. Mayor, you want to start us? Do you have anything? Councilman Worthy?
Yeah, I want to make a couple announcements. Get this thing to work. Okay. On this Saturday, the 19th, at Mount Piricum Church on North Ninth Street, the Lois Harold family will be giving out toys. So it'll start at 10 o'clock until they run out of toys. Also, we'll be doing the feeding at Carver on the 23rd from 11 to 2 to go plates. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon. Councilman Reed.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Wilson.
Just want to make a general announcement, and I'll follow up next week, that we are going to do our Feed the Need program this year. It'll be a drive-through, contactless pickup. So that'll be on the 23rd of December. We'll do that like we have every year for the last eight years at Back Forty. We're actually going to set it up so nobody will have to get out of their car. You can just pull through, and you'll get either a full turkey or a ham, three side canned good items, and a dessert. We'll have 750 of those boxes pre-made and ready to pick up. In the past, you've had to stand in a line and get a ticket and then turn it in. We won't do any of that this year. You'll just be able to drive by. We'll have people on the sidewalk. We can put it in your trunk. We can put it in your backseat. We can throw it at you, whatever you want. But anyway, so hopefully that will go off without a hitch. Now, I am hearing from some of the local grocers that we coordinate with to pull this off, that there potentially is a shortage of hams and turkeys maybe right now. So it's possible that you may get a Stouffer's family-sized lasagna. I don't know, but we're going to make sure that everybody has a meal that needs one on the 23rd. I know there's some other events. Edgewall Cares is doing 1,000 meals at Gadsden City High School also on the 23rd. I think those are individual meals. I just want to make it clear that our packages are for the entire family. It's a family meal. So either way, whether you go over there to get a meal for the day, or whether you come to us and get a box where you can cook for your family at a later date, just make sure you guys take advantage of that. I'll go ahead and make a quick comment about the rendering plant, because I've got something to say. I respect everybody in this community's right to voice their opinion, to come up here, but what frustrates me is because a lot of people in this community have gotten ahold of documents that they've never seen before. They have been introduced to a process that they've never been a part of, and I understand having questions. I understand questioning why things work the way they work. I understand demanding that things work better in the future. I mean, that is part of constructive community participation. But I 100% reject these personal attacks on this city council time and time again, as if we've done something sinister here. What you guys are asking for, and I'd ask you to keep this in mind, when y'all all say, "We don't need to go through the process, we should just vote no on this," you've got to understand objectively that you only want that in this situation. When another situation comes up down the road that you're actually in favor of, and a bunch of people show up and start screaming in opposition to it, and we go, "Well, we're abandoning the process, and we're just going to vote like this because a bunch of people have shown up upset," then you're going to be upset that we handled it that way. The reason we say, or the reason I say I'm going to go through this process is so it can work the same way every time. Whether you're for it or against it, at least we know it's going to work the same way every time. That's all I'm trying to do, is follow a fundamental process for how we review projects. So when we get into all this misinformation and accusing people of abuse of power, this council specifically, again, the reason there hasn't been an IDA meeting, to my knowledge, is because we haven't had an IDA meeting on this yet. You guys got the information so early that we haven't even had a chance to have an IDA meeting or a city council meeting to discuss it, all of which are a normal part of the process. I understand wanting to usurp all of that and just get to the no vote, but when you take the fact that we haven't had those meetings and try to use it to prove that we were doing something sinister, no. Y'all just found out about it before the IDA meeting. You found out about it before the council had a public hearing about it. We were always going to have a public hearing about it. I have never been a part of a new project like this since I've been on the council for two years where we did not have a public hearing before we voted on something. Now, again, we've had times where we took in for immediate consideration projects that were already in existence in this community, and we're simply going through an expansion. That has happened before. But we have never had a new project since I've been on this council that comes where we didn't have some sort of public hearing about it, to my knowledge. I may be wrong about that, but to my knowledge, that's never happened. So I just want, there's so many factors you guys don't understand, like Mr. Thrasher, I appreciate your comments, and I certainly understand them. But for me, I didn't wake up knowing how all this stuff worked. It took me years of learning how economic development works and being involved in these projects to understand why certain things are certain ways. And I agree with you, there's always room for improvement. I am a student of continuous improvement at my business. I teach it to my staff. We go through extensive training on process improvement and how to make things better incrementally. So I love that everybody's here and involved in this process. I just ask that we disabuse ourselves of this idea that our local leaders are acting the same way as some big wig politicians. I don't think y'all understand fully. I do this one day a week. I work full-time. I have a full-time job. My wife has a full-time job, and I do this one day a week. I don't have a staff. When you email me, I don't have a clerk, like an assistant that's, you know, going through my emails and proofreading them. When you call my phone or text message me, I don't have some staffer that's replying to the messages. It's just me on top of my full-time job. I come up here and do this. So this idea that we're, I'm this power-wielding individual in this community is simply not true. I don't have the authority to make things happen at will in this community. I am one of seven votes. And again, Mr. Thrasher, the thing that I take into account when you talk about the airport, and this goes to the comments from the Realtor Association, too. I share those concerns. Gadsden's been a little bit backwards for a long time. We build our plants in the middle of the city, and then everybody moves out to the country. Normally, everybody lives in the city, and we build our plants in the country. So it makes it tough around here to make projects work, because there's a lot of people in this county that like to live in rural places. There's a lot of people in this county that like to do business in rural parts of the community. So we have a challenge before us, just like the steel plant, just like the Goodyear plant that are in our metro areas that we've dealt with for a long time, 100 years. Now, we've got this situation where we have residential property that is in the middle of industrial land. I mean, that land that the city owns out there, 380 acres of industrial land. And back to your point, Ms. Kidd, what are we going to do? If we just jump this whole process and just dump it and say, "We're not doing this, let's move on," what are we going to do with that 380 acres of land? Mr. Thrasher, I worry about the airport. We talk about developing that airport all the time. I've seen a lot of people talk about trying to attract more aviation businesses there, trying to attract more aviation traffic. My question is, what are the residents around that airport going to say when we've got 100 airplanes coming in and out of that airport? I can guarantee you right now, somebody is going to come up and say, "I can't believe that y'all are disrupting my air and sound quality by all of these loud airplanes taking off and landing." And the same thing, let's say we develop that airport, and we get a bunch of, we go out, I don't know how we attract those individuals. Again, I'm not in charge of industrial development for the city, but let's say we go out and get a bunch of aviation businesses in there. Is that also not going to have a negative impact on the Air National Guard and their ability to jump out there? You know, so I'm just saying, it's not as clear as y'all make it. And yes, the odds are that we are not illogical people trying to progress some secret agenda. I've said this time and time again, given the time to review this information, there is no doubt that I will come to the same logical conclusion that most others have. But you have to understand as elected officials, and I'll give you an example from my personal business. 12 years ago, I started Back Forty Beer Company. We were the first packaging brewery in the state of Alabama. There wasn't another one in the entire state when we came to Gadsden. And I took over the Alabama Brewers Guild. Well, as you might can imagine, a group of individuals all wanting to start a brewery are a rowdy bunch, and they were all upset because our alcohol laws in Alabama were terrible. They didn't allow for breweries to do all these things that would make our businesses viable. And their strategy up until me getting involved was, "This is wrong. We need to go down to Montgomery and kick the doors in and burn this mother down until we get what we want." Guess how effective that was? They passed zero legislation prior to that. But when I became president of the council, or president of Alabama Brewers Guild, I said, "That's not the way we're going to do it, guys. The reason these people are not working with us is because they're uninformed." So we set out on a long-term strategy to get engaged with the legislature in Montgomery, go down, spend time talking to those legislatures, educating them about our industry. And the net result is, over the last decade, we passed 11 pieces of legislation that changed this industry forever. We now have 53 breweries in this state representing some 4,000 jobs and $460 million a year in economic impact in this state. And we didn't do it by going and threatening our elected officials that if they don't listen to us, you'll remember it. I'm just telling y'all, as somebody who's not of full, I'm talking about the hundreds of emails that I've gotten where people say, "You better vote this way, or I'm going to vote you out of office." I'm talking about the general consensus here, and you have to understand, this is what's frustrating. Just, all due respect, ma'am, just like you are appalled by the fact that you would be held accountable for some broad accusation that others had made, ditto. When you get up here and make accusations about abuse of power and corruption on this council, even though you may not be talking about me, it ticks a box, you know? It ticks a box, is all I'm saying. I'm trying to give y'all advice about how to go about this to get your desired result. And I'm just telling you, it creates animosity when those personal accusations get made about local elected officials. It divides the conversation. It does not move it forward. And I'm just trying to tell you guys that this process is not as out of control as you think it is. It is not as erratic as you guys think it is. It is not as corrupt as you think it is. It's just that a whole giant group of people in this community all just got introduced to how economic development and government works, something that I had to spend years learning, and I still don't know all the moving parts of it. I'm still not an expert at it. So again, I respect and appreciate every single argument against this rendering plant, and I agree with most of them. I take real issue with the way the conversation gets framed as abuse of power or corruption. I just don't think it has a place. There are people that, if there are people here that have acted inappropriately, they deserve to be held accountable, no doubt, but I would make darn sure that I know all the facts before I wield those accusations, is all I'm saying. But thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Councilman Bat.
Thank you, Madam President. In regard to my comments last week, if I offended anybody for what I said, certainly that wasn't my intention. I would offer an apology. My comments were said mostly out of concern of my family. I didn't file a police report. I did send a text message to Chief of Police and to Captain of Patrol, and I guess I didn't think, I guess I thought that was what I was supposed to do. So again, if I offended anybody with my comments, I certainly apologize. It's a tough process, y'all. This is, I'm like Jason, I've got a full-time job. I do this one day a week. Last three weeks, I've done this full-time, seven days a week, because it requires that kind of attention, and I take this real serious. I'm working very hard for District Four that I represent, and I'm working very hard for the whole county. I think all of us are. I've never read this much, you know, since college, probably. I've never read this much. I've even had to get, I'm getting new glasses. My eyes started losing strength. I mean, I'm reading and reading, and it's been good. I mean, it's been a good education, so I've learned a great deal from a lot of you that have sent a lot of information with a lot of links. I read every email, all 500-plus and text messages. I'm certainly listening, and I'm certainly open to anything anybody has to offer, and I appreciate the effort and your heart and your desire to see our city and county do better. I share those same desires. That's why I ran for city council. So just bear with us as we get through this process and get through this COVID. You know, I was in quarantine for 14 days, which allowed me to do a lot of reading, so just know that, just end with, if I offended anybody with my comments, I haven't gone back and looked. I don't like listening to myself talk. I don't like watching it, so I guess I need to suffer through that and go back and watch. I don't really remember exactly everything I said, but obviously, if I said something that was unfavorable, I certainly apologize. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wiggins.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to reiterate everything that's been said, obviously. I don't want to reiterate everything that's been said, obviously for the sake of time, but guys, please understand that a lot of the processes and procedures that are in place in terms of how meetings are conducted are there to help ensure that we withhold a proper standard of decorum, because we watch some pretty chaotic meetings across the state and across the country, and it's because they don't have reasonable standards of decorum in place to ensure orderly meetings. And I tip my hat to those who came before us, those people who actually put those processes in place, because we, you know, across the state, people truly, they truly admire the procedures that we do have in place. So I don't necessarily apologize for that part. Now, one thing I will say to both the people in the building and outside, listen, we, I think largely these, the demonstrations, the commentary, they've been respectful. I've had some one-on-ones with some of the people that are very clearly against this rendering plant, and they're, those conversations have been very civil. They've offered up their opinions very respectfully, and they've done, you know, they've done their part in terms of the protest, and there's nothing wrong with that. I do think there's an attempt by a, and I, you know, again, I engaged in some name-calling last week. That's not okay, never is that okay. And so I apologize for that. But there are some very small group of people who are attempting to hijack the discussion with less than truthful and less than respectful commentary. And wherever you are on either side of this discussion, we can't let them do that. So let's not. Let's not let those people hijack the discussion. You know, I'll very quickly ask that, you know, that you guys understand that it's, you know, you may very well get the outcome you're looking for, but I don't think it's very likely that the council is going to do anything ahead of the process that it's been charged to follow. You know, Alabama's not a home rule state, and so pretty much everything we do as an elected body was dictated to us by the Constitution of the state of Alabama, which was developed in, at the turn of the century, at the turn of the 20, at the turn of the 19th century. And it was done in an attempt to ensure that power stays centralized in Montgomery. You can say what you want about those people who sat at that Constitutional Convention back then, but they were smart about one thing. They may have been evil, but they were smart about one thing. They were smart because they saw the diversifying and the, they saw more of an inclusive nature of municipalities and cities in the future. And so they took steps to make sure that that got controlled, and they were successful in that, because again, we're not a home rule state. And so again, those policies that we're following were given to us. They were handed to us. Please don't miss the point that I just made. You may well get the outcome you're looking for, but the process will be followed. And again, we respect everyone's commentary. I want to thank those four or five people that I talked to this week who didn't agree with this rendering plan at all, neither one of them, but they were very respectful in how they presented it. I let them talk, and they let me talk, and we ended the conversation on a cordial note. So again, thank you to those folks. The pandemic, you know, in the midst of all this, be safe. If you're outside protesting, be safe. If you're in here, be safe. I think this is probably the best job we've done over the last few weeks of social distancing. So thank you. Thank you, guys, for that. I will say that the two of you are getting way too close over there, so y'all should probably back up. But beyond that, I think everybody's being smart about it, and most everybody's wearing masks, and that's a good thing, so I appreciate it. I have one final announcement. There will be a Santa stroll hosted by the Central Carver Revitalization Committee on Tuscaloosa Avenue, the 19th. That's this weekend at 1:00 p.m. So come out and bring the children and see Santa and Mrs. Claus. They'll be on a horse-driven carriage, just waving the kids, probably throwing candy, I'm not sure about that, in the midst of this pandemic, if that'll be possible, but definitely greeting the kids and the adults that still believe in Santa and just making sure that we have some semblance of the holiday spirit during this very difficult time. So please support that event. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay. My comment is that I will continue to speak power to truth. The city council will meet with Zoom the 22nd and the 29th of December, so we'll be in Zoom meetings for the next, for the last, for the rest of the month. I have a motion to adjourn.